...which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you for being here. Rule call, please.
Sarda?
Here. Here. Stern Quest? Here. Crandall?
Here. We have a quorum. Next up, approve the agenda for my meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Would you second it? Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Greenway?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Stern Quest?
Yeah.
Crandall?
Yes. Item three, approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three regular school board meeting.
Second.
Would you second it? Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Sarda?
Here. Oh, yes.
Greenway?
Yes, and still here.
Stern Quest?
Yeah.
Crandall?
Yes. Next up, conflict of interest. Do any board members have a conflict of interest to declare, either in, direct or indirect? Hearing done, move on to the consent agenda. Here, take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda before us. Second.
Move to second then to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? Rule call, please.
Greenway?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Stern Quest?
Yeah.
Crandall?
Yes. Moving on, public comments section. Serene, anybody signed up for the comment?
No.
Item seven, good news achievement. Mr. Mitzel, Mr. Dean.
Good evening. Just a few things to share. One is we wrapped up our parent-teacher conferences at Beetle School last week, and just really pleased with our attendance on that and our parent participation. We had about roughly four hundred and fifteen kids or so at Beetle, and I think we had maybe twenty that were not, did not have a conference. And when I looked a little bit more at those numbers, we're looking at like five or six families. So all those families that that come to Beetle to have them involved, who want to be part of their kids' education, I think that that's a, that's a great thing, and it shows a lot about our parents, our community, and also our teachers who work really hard to try and reschedule people and give them a good time. Our best organization, which is our parent-teacher organization, in the past, we've done a book fair during parent-teacher conferences. One of the things that we decided to do this year was just to do a book exchange. For those of you that have younger kids, you sometimes realize how those books pile up in your homes, and the price of a new book can be ten, fifteen dollars, when we used to have a regular book fair. So parents and children could come down and just pick out books. We had books donated, and had several boxes that we're not taking, and those will go to the Big Red Bookshelf program. A couple of exciting things this week. It is American Education Week, and we're excited to to have a breakfast for our families on Wednesday, so between Thrive and Hy-Vee, we've had some donations. And we're gonna have a breakfast on Wednesday morning where we're serving juice and donuts and things like that. So we'll have a gym full of people, and that's always kind of a fun day. We have two writers' roundtables this week, which kind of fits nicely with our American Education Week, and we also have a dare graduation on Thursday at one, so lots of opportunities to have people in the building this week. That's what I am. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Just want to highlight is the WAXAPAY. Those things come out with the P and D every month, and I just wanna, we also have the online version of that, if you missed that. So you can click right on this, and it'll give you each WAXAPAY art from the year. So I'll just take a look at November with that, and students have done a fabulous job with this, as well as our advisor, Mrs. Ladwig, who happens to be here tonight, so thank you, Mrs. Ladwig. But just a fantastic job, very professionally done, and looks just fantastic with our journalism and the WAXAPAY of what we have to put forth. So that's what I just wanted to showcase tonight with that. That's available. It'll be available each month when those editions come out for anybody to look at. And so, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, automate freedom and tech integration specialists spotlight record is Ellie.
Um, so, um, so over the last few years, we have implemented Promethean panels at every level now, with the high school finishing up this summer. So there's seventy-eight panels, Promethean panels, at the elementary buildings. That's twenty-two at Beetle, twenty-two at Lincoln, nineteen at Stewart, and fifteen at Webster. Then forty-five last summer at the middle school, and then this past summer, fifty-nine at the high school. So the pictures up on the screen there just showcase some how the panels are being used. So the preschool classroom right there, it was a brain break. The kids were doing a brain break and following along with the video for some gross motor movement. In the kindergarten classroom, that was part of centers. It was a math center and intervention time where they were sorting by color. In the second grade classroom, that second grade teacher, she was using the Promethean panel to present the open court reading curriculum. The ELA classroom at the middle school, they were going over mood and how that affects pieces of writing. And then the picture at the high school in the library is just an example of how they're used to show and announce. So they're used in multitude of ways, and there's certainly many ways that aren't shown on that screen, but just so that you can see a little bit of how it's used at each level.
Thank you, Ellie.
Thank you.
Educators Rising, Kayla Ladwig and Hope Bonas.
All right. Good evening. It's our pleasure to share about Educators Rising, which is a new chapter that we are starting at YHS this year. So as you might recall, last year, we wrapped up our CTE review, and one of the clusters that we added was education and training. Within that cluster, we also added into our course offerings, Intro to Education, which is starting up this year, and along with that course, we are adding a chapter called Educators Rising. So with that, I'm proud to say that when we, I knew we were adding that course, I wanted to be a part of getting it up and running, and so myself and along with Mrs. Ladwig are the advisors for Educators Rising this year. And you can see in the center, that was a photo of our first meeting, which I'll talk a little bit about coming up.
So Educators Rising is a nationwide chapter, or a nationwide community of people who are helping young people at the high school level, even at the middle school level in some, some areas, who want to become an educator. And something that is misconceived about education, if you want to become an educator, it just doesn't mean a teacher. There's so much more to education. You can be a curriculum director, you can be administrator, you can be a technology interventionist, you can be a school psychologist, you can be a speech pathologist, anybody in the educational world. And if you've been to a school, you've been touched by hundreds of different jobs and educational outlines. Like, there is so much that goes beyond just a teacher. And Educators Rising wants to support and guide any individuals who wants to help cultivate a wonderful environment for students going through the educational field, to bring them to be the best future educator possible. So Educators Rising, their mission is to cultivate a new generation of highly skilled educators. So getting a jump start, and there's nothing ever wrong with getting a jump start on anything in life. In fact, it only helps with a lot of things. So Educators Rising is an amazing, amazing chapter that we are able to continue or bring back to Yankton High School, and it'll cultivate a new generation of highly skilled educators, like I said. So their mission is to create a small community, or our mission, I should say, is to create a small community of future people who are aspiring to be educators, a little safe space for them to share ideas, learn, ask questions, practice being educator, see experience, and shadow educators. We're taking a bunch of students this Friday to the Mount Marty exposition for Educators Rising. They'll talk with teachers, they'll talk with professors, they'll talk with students who are training right now to become future teachers. This chapter is wonderful. Their vision and mission statement is up there, but it really is changing the face of teaching. We're giving these students a head start, and we are going to produce the best teachers. We already are, but we're going to produce the best outstanding citizens. And this is just a little way that we can help sprinkle some, some emotions where students can feel prepared out there when they're choosing their future careers.
I would also mention that Ms. Ladwig is going to be the instructor for our new Intro to Education class, and as you can tell, she'll be excellent at that. All right, so the Educators Rising, they, they share the following standards for our members to understand about education. So Mrs. Ladwig and I have decided to host one meeting per month, and we focus on one of these standards. Ask us questions about our daily roles and how we came to be in our roles as well. In our second meeting, we focused on how educators build relationships with students, so the second standard up there. For this meeting, I ran a responsive classroom morning meeting. So you might remember in one of our prior board meetings, we had some information on responsive classroom, which is used heavily in our elementaries. And then we also created an infographic with our, with our members on how teachers have built relationships with them, and we're sharing that with our middle school, high school teachers to show them how they're touching students' lives each and every day.
So who can join this organization, this chapter at our high school? Anyone, nine through twelve, anyone is welcome. In fact, we highly encourage all grade levels to join. However, as you can see in this little diagram up here, this little infographic, the older you get and the more confident you are on your career choice, and you know, you, we also offer more electives as they go throughout their journey of their high school career. So as they get older, as they progress in their own education, they do get more opportunities and exposure to educational events. Educators Rising hosts several expositions each month, which contain a different university feature, and they go and they, they listen to speakers, they have different kind of breakout sessions. It's extremely beneficial. So as a freshman, they'll get to attend our monthly meetings, and each month, we have a monthly outreach, whether they're volunteering. For example, they volunteered the literacy night for our October outreach, for our November outreach. They can do a series of things. They can do volunteer. We're creating an infographic poster that's going to be placed in middle school and high school staff lounges. And you know, as they progress throughout their, their, their high school career, you can see as a senior, not only do they get to go to our monthly meetings, we still let them come, but they have the opportunity to have an internship program, which is already being fulfilled at our high school. We're just going to offer more avenues for them to explore education. They can attend all college expositions. Some require a little bit of travel. They will have scholarship opportunities presented to them. They have ambassador opportunities presented for them, and they also get to go to a state qualifying kind of competition, organization meet where they do a presentation of sorts for Educators Rising. So freshmen through seniors are welcome to join. I guess the more committed you are, the more benefits there are, as of anything, right?
So as Ms. Ladwig mentioned, not only do we host a monthly meeting that focuses on one of those standards, we also plan for outreach opportunities. In October, we encouraged our students, and this is what the photo is, to attend the family literacy and math night at the Yankton Community Library. For November, which is coming up this Friday, we'll be attending the Mount Marty Expo, and then we have an outreach opportunity planned for each month that kind of ties to our standard focus as well.
So that basically concludes Educators Rising. Are there any questions that Nicole or myself can bring? Any clarification to about this program? It was an existing chapter. It kind of was put on sleep mode during COVID, but it's fully awake now.
This is, this is a Nashville program?
Yes, national organization, and then depending on your state, you can open up several different chapters throughout South Dakota. Did Travis say how many chapters there are? Okay, yeah. So different school districts. We're one of few school districts, so, because we're always so wonderful. I believe we're ahead of the game here, yeah.
And how many students do you have in that?
We have twelve.
Do you know the breakdown of freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors?
Primarily, we are very senior-heavy right now, because I, well, one, seniors are paying attention to posters in the hallway and opportunities and scholarships and things like that. They also have their minds made up. And this is, you know, they've brought into their realization, goodness, I'm graduating next year. I better get my resume all plump and get some experience. So we're looking to get some more freshmen. We have one sophomore, and just about everybody else is a senior, I believe, right? Three sophomores, and then everybody else is a senior. Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, choir trip. Mrs. Larson.
Hello. I don't have a fancy PowerPoint. And Ms. Ladwig is very good at those. But I am here to answer any questions you might have about our upcoming choir trip. We're gonna go to Omaha, and my favorite part of this trip is going to be taking the kids to a college campus to have a professor work with them. And not only is that awesome, but it gives these students an opportunity to get on a college campus that maybe isn't twenty-three miles away or right here in our own community. So a lot of kids don't have that experience unless they go on a trip like this. And then we will see a Broadway show. I just told them that, so it's The Lion King. And then the next day, we'll stop at a couple of fun places before heading home. And this is something the students really look forward to, those who are really committed. They, you know, stay in choir all three, four years, and this is something that's fun and a reward for them. And just here to answer any questions you might have about it.
When is the trip?
March eighth and ninth.
Do you have any idea approximately how many students we'll be taking from what that you anticipate?
Probably around fifty. So a couple buses and some adults. And they've had opportunities to fundraise for this and help for the expense of it, and then the choir boosters will pay for any remaining costs.
And when you pick between the fun thing that you're gonna do, is all are done, or so many can go do this one, and so many can do that one, how do you?
That's a good question. I'm looking into, there's a trampoline park. The boys are interested in that, and I think I got the girls convinced that that's what we're gonna do for fun activity. I don't think I'm going to. I don't need a broken arm. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Next, Dr. Kindle.
I'll make a motion to approve the YHS choir trip.
We have to take an action.
A second.
All right. Move to the second then we approved the choir trip. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Sarda?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Stern Quest?
Yeah.
Crandall?
Yes. Motion carried. Now, we have Dr. Kindle and Mrs. Bonas.
I'll let you go ahead.
All right.
Please, thank you.
Yep. So I actually, as I was thinking about this, when I first started at YSD back in two thousand eighteen, I was, one of the first tasks that I worked on was the strategic plan for Word 2024. And here we are again, five years later, to work on Forward 2029. And so I just want to go over the timeline of events for our strategic plan. In October, from the second through the twentieth, we had released our survey, and we had over eight hundred, about eight, just close to nine hundred participants in that survey. October twenty-seventh, we reviewed the survey results as an administration team. On November fifteenth, so this week on Wednesday night, so we will have a special school board meeting at 5:00 PM at Yankton High School in the theater to review those survey results and share them with the community. Following that special school board meeting on Wednesday in the commons, we will have strategic planning sessions in which we'll bring community members as well as school staff together into small groups in one of each of those focus areas that was presented in the survey. Our next meeting then for strategic planning will be in February on the thirteenth, followed by May thirteenth, bringing our final strategic plan for Forward 2029 to the school board meeting on May thirteenth, the regular school board meeting, and then looking for action on that Forward 2029 plan in June. Any questions?
I guess the question occurs to me is, Dr. Kindle or Mrs. Bonas, how are you doing the 2024 plan?
Well, there's a lot there to talk about, but I would tell you that I think one of the things that we're most proud about with our five-year plans is that we actually do things in the plan. They're not shelved, but we take a look at them and we get things done. And I think that is, that's what's impressed me the most about our strategic plans when we started this ten years ago, was that we, we get things done, and we do the things that our community have asked us to do. And that's why it's so important for people that took part in this survey, because you are helping us direct and guide the district on what you would like to see us do as a school district. And so we've gotten a lot done, and there's more to do.
I would also add that on our Yankton School District website, if you scroll down, if you scroll down to the very bottom of the page, there is a link right up a little bit right there for our current strategic plan. So you could go ahead and go through that and kind of think through those things and reflect on how we've been doing on the plan. But that is one of our tasks that we'll be doing this Wednesday with our small groups, as well as really looking back of where, where we're at right now. Have we met that goal? Are we still meeting that goal, and what's our next step? Any other questions?
Who else? Thank you so much. Item twelve, tax levy request. Serene.
Yeah, this is an amendment. The capital outlay was, the capital outlay was estimated in September, and then in October, the final number came up. So it's just amending the capital outlay backed portion of this request.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Dr. Kindle, do you want to say? I'm sorry. Yeah. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the amended tax levy request as recorded in our agenda.
Second.
Would you second if we approved the tax levy request? Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Greenway?
Yes.
Sarda? Yes. Stern Quest?
Yeah.
Crandall?
Yes. I entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion we move into executive session from South Dakota Court of law one dash twenty-five dash two.
Second.
Executive move into, uh, executive session, the session on.
Sarda?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Stern Quest?
Yeah.
Crandall?
Yes. Right, executive session. You may move to go into executive session, so I didn't even go out to executive session.
We declare itself.
I just declare itself without doing that? Okay, I declare itself as executive session. The hearing officer will read the motion.
The motion is that student HM be suspended for long term based upon school district policy part six, paragraph J, paragraph three, subsections A and I. The terms of long-term suspension would include as following, the student being prohibited from entering any school district the student be prohibited from entering any school district property throughout the suspension period, stipulating that any subsequent incidents upon their return would result in expulsion for one calendar year through October twenty-sixth of 2024. Classes and credits would not be offered for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And lastly, a licensed and accredited psychiatrist or psychologist would have to provide a written recommendation regarding the safe return of the student to the school.
I would make a motion to approve what you just said. With the amendment, the suspension would last till the end of the school year, which would be around May seventeen.
Do you second the motion with the amendment?
I would second the emotion, I would second the motion with the amendment. That the suspension be from November thirteenth until May seventeenth, 2024, or whatever the last day of school is.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Sarda?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Um, Cramble?
Yes, entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I get that you want us to go back into executive session.
We're done, right?
You're done.
I make a motion to go into executive session, South Dakota Court of law one, twenty-five, two, and parentheses two.
Second.
Okay, we are, I just clarify it's out of the executive session. The hearing officer will read the motion.
It's moved by the Yankton School District that student AP will be subject to a long-term expulsion pursuant to part six of the Yankton School District policy, paragraph J, paragraph three, items, little letter A and I. The terms of the expulsion will include the following, prohibiting student from entering any Yankton school district property throughout the suspension period, stipulating that any subsequent incidences involving the student's return would result in expulsion for one calendar year through October twenty-sixth of 2024. Classes and credits will not be offered for the remainder of the school year. A threat assessment is required before the student can return to the school in the fall of 2024. A licensed, accredited psychiatrist or psychologist, is that psychologist, you just, okay? Must conduct the threat assessment. Assessment findings must be made available to the school with a written recommendation regarding the safe return to the school by the student, by either the psychiatrist or psychologist. A suicide risk assessment is required for the full year.
You said full calendar.
Okay, you have a, we're talking about the calendar year, not the school year.
Meaning of the calendar year, school year, okay?
Not the school year, the calendar year.
Okay.
When is recommended?
When is recommended?
Yeah, I thought I was reading that.
Yeah, I thought so.
Well, you had to go until the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, so that should go to the October twenty-sixth, right?
Yes.
October twenty-sixth of 2024. Suicide assessment risks are required before the student can return to the school on October twenty-sixth of 2024. A licensed, accredited psychiatrist or psychologist must conduct the suicide risk assessment. Assessment finding must be made available to the school with the psychiatrist or psychologist written recommendation regarding the student's safety and mental well-being.
So moved.
Second.
Would you second the need for the discussion? Roll call, please.
Greenway?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Cramble?
Yes. Any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.